Did make it, I mean, you see that?
I, I don't look much like I did when I, you know, was on test.
You'll be on it.
They won't notice me. Louis the Sardine.
You did.
Okay, I'm back, can you hear me, Elena?
You're live.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Reed, if you could stand at the podium, that thing. You can get hurt, no?
What I was saying was there's a lot of public here, so instead of doing the public after, words might be easier to do than first. So that's what I'm saying. Send everybody away and ask them to come back, we're gonna be very, very well prepared, but we think. So, that's all I was going to say.
Mayor Proton, you were asking a question and we lost contact.
Yeah, so, uh, Scotty, you have a mixture of community members in the crowd as well as Public Works employees here as well. You know, in the case that we need further conversations with Public Works employees, we're, um, you know, obviously bringing them in during the executive session as needed. I'm sure that will be the case, um, but, um, you know, as far as I understood, it was a conversation with Steve yesterday, this is gonna open up as a normal meeting, like, we already have up to this point, um, conflicts of interest, roll call, excusing, that's my understanding, that included three-minute public comment. Would that be direct for this case here?
Yeah, it's a little garbled, but yeah, that's the general process, the, the, um, admission of others into public or into the executive session, I don't know if you've heard my comment on that. Um, I would not encourage you to have members of the public in there because they're not bound by the confidentiality issues. Uh, even members of the town staff who didn't, you, you need to be careful getting people of town staff into the executive session because if you start discussing their performance, then they have that same right to have it done in public or an executive session, and they didn't really have notice that their performance might be discussed. So generally, an executive session, unless there is a a real need for anyone other than the employees and the town board to be there, I encourage just those people, the town board and the employees to be there. The, the two employees that are the subject of the executive session.
So if any reasoning, the Public Works guys didn't want to speak up, they're welcome to during the public meeting at this time, correct?
Yeah, they, they could speak during the public meeting.
Okay, in the form of the public meeting, do you want me, um, since I've done items of discussion, open it up for the three-minute time for the public to speak? And then we would make the motion to go into executive session after that? I'm just wanting to make sure I'm doing everything right.
Yeah, I would, I would, um, you know, I, I don't think that you want to entertain public comment before the executive session. Uh, I think that since both of the employees have indicated that they're fine with doing it in an executive session, and the sole purpose of this meeting is to address the one issue of personnel matters between the two employees, I don't think you have any, any basis for having a public session at this point, because then you're going beyond the scope of the special meeting.
Okay. Matt, what's your, what's your feeling on this? I mean, really?
I think they need to talk.
And so one of the things that I, I would say is, you know, as far as the public piece goes, um, you know, numerous, you know, we've had wonderful, uh, emails sent, numerous emails sent regarding, I think, pretty much what a lot of these public comments will be. Um, because this was set to be an executive session, and I, I have no stake in the game here, I'm just wanting to be fair to both parties, that manager Kudron is not here in the public, and I don't know if there's anyone here to speak on, you know, his behalf, or if staff wants to speak, so this seems, because it was set to be executive session, I'm, I'm just questioning the, I, I want to make sure that it's fair for both sides, that we're doing everything correctly, I don't want anything to come back on any of us.
Well, I guess I would recommend, since both employees have agreed to an executive session, that you have the executive session, and then, uh, when you come out of executive session, you can decide if you want to hear in a public forum from anyone else.
Okay. So that is the suggestion by the town attorney, I am the spokesperson for the board, I want to hear the board's opinion on this. Both have agreed to executive session, we do understand that there's public here that wants to speak, and I, I understand that, and I thank you all for coming. This is a stressful situation for everyone, and I appreciate that, but I want to make sure we all, to protect everyone here, um, we do what our attorney suggests, so that's my statement. Feedback would be appreciated.
I'm gonna agree with that, and when we originally reached out to Scotty to make sure we were following our ducks in the world with regards to, um, the request here for the special meeting, um, though it was mentioned in the meeting, uh, from Scott that, um, Mr., uh, Reed would have the opportunity to choose whether it was open or closed, we did discuss that, Scotty, could you maybe just go a little more detail about that?
Well, I think, can I just clarify this just really quick, so we're on the same page, I think that's what was the discussion, is that if we, it's inappropriate to do that now, whether it was manager Kudron or, or, um, Mr. Reed, that we're we're crossing some lines. And even though I was said that both have agreed to executive session, then...
Don't, I accept, I fully support the executive session, I think.
If, if, if Mr. Reed is to keep in contact with the people that are in here today, and depending on their work schedules and, and life schedules, if they're able to come back, and we do open it up for public, of course he can reach out to them, and, and hopefully they can come back in, is that how we should frame that?
Well, you, you can, but, um, Reed, Reed sort of needs to decide if he wants to have his performance discussed in the public forum, or in the, to the extent that there is an, an issue of his performance, and he sort of needs to decide if he wants that done in a public session or executive session. Uh, you, you can't really do it both ways, because if you have the discussion in executive session, and you do that to protect confidentiality and, um, certain privacy interests of both witnesses and the employee, and then you come out into public session and have the same discussion or a similar discussion, you have really, uh, pretty much eliminated all the protections for those privacy interests, um, and those employee interests, so he, he needs to decide if he wants the discussion of his performance done in public or in executive session.
Public.
He wants, he wants it in public.
Okay, then I would suggest you have your executive session regarding the manager's performance, and then when you come out, uh, open it up to a public meeting, to the extent that, um, there are issues related to uh, this aspect of his performance, um, to a public meeting to consider that performance.
Okay, so we'll go into executive session and discuss the manager's performance, and then we will come out of executive session, go into an open forum for discussion of Mr. Reed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I move to deny the executive session.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Pursue whatever.
I'm sorry, what was the, the motion?
Um, there was a motion made to deny going into executive session.
Yeah, you really can't make a motion to deny going into executive session. Uh, you're not in executive session, and the only way you can get there is through a positive motion, and it requires a two-thirds majority, and that's why I say there's really not a, a motion to deny executive session, because there's no, um, number in the statute of what vote that takes, so if, if nobody moves to go into executive session, then the matter just dies for lack of a motion. Um, but the only motion that could be made is to go into executive session, and then if you don't get the two-thirds vote, which in this case would be four trustees, then that, that motion simply fails, and you don't go into executive session.
I have a motion to enter executive session.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please pull the board, trustee someone? Or sorry, Mayor Proton, someone?
Aye.
Basti Piso?
Aye.
Basti Shanner?
Nay.
Basti Mills?
Aye.
Basti Arsene?
Aye.
My breakfast. Nay. So we will be going into executive session now?
I think you might be. So, I don't know. Okay, don't you, or that's why I have to make sure.
Okay, let's, let's focus, um, if we, we, um, have two thirds, so we'll be moving into an executive session now. I will ask the public to leave, um, the building, we will shut down the room and start recording, um, if possible, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that mean today, or does that mean?
Each week.
So Mayor, let me make a brief record before you start your discussions again?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll note for the record that it's about 2:45, um, that the board suspended its executive session period at around 2:15. So when everyone sort of got up and went to eat, that was the end of that part of the executive session, just so the record's clear, and that the board has now reconvened into open session at approximately 2:45 PM.
Got to read a motion that we got left, executive session or anything, we did not dispute that. Correct?
Well, yeah, and, and we can make a record at the end of your, um, when you resume your executive session, but we might as well go ahead and do it now. Um, the executive session was conducted to discuss the, uh, personnel issue with the town manager, and those present were the town board of trustees, and the town manager was invited in for part of that discussion. I was also present virtually as the town attorney, and, um, so if there's anyone that feels that the, the discussions during that part of the executive session went outside the scope of the motion to go into executive session, uh, if you would please voice your objection now.
We hear none?
Yeah, hearing no objection, then we'll go back, uh, into proceeding with the the regular portion of the meeting, and I'll note for the record that I was also present as the attorney, so it's subject to the attorney-client privilege. And then before we proceed with the public part of the meeting, I need to, um, ask Matt Holleran if he can just step to the mic so I can, um...
Matt Reed.
I'm sorry, Matt Reed Holleran, to, uh, the mics, like, a, a brief record before we proceed.
Yeah, I'm here, we'll just go with Matt Reed. Don't worry about solving.
All right, we'll just go with Matt Reed then, so, uh, Mr. Reed, earlier today, we had, well, and let me note for the record that, um, as I said, we just finished the discussion between the board and the town manager. Um, the board has also received several letters in support of your position, and I wanted to let you know that the board has, has received that and, and has reviewed them. Earlier today, we discussed about your option to have this part of the proceeding conducted either in the open meeting or in a closed executive session, and you indicated at that time that you wanted this part of the meeting done in open session. Um, and I just wanted to remind you that the determination of whether it's done in open session or in closed executive, uh, session is up to you. If you choose to have it done in the open session, then, um, uh, the board will hear comments, and those comments can be either favorable or unfavorable to you, we can't filter through those. Um, but since it is your right to have it held in open session or in executive session, I just wanted to ask you again if you want to go forward with the open session, or if you'd prefer to do it in the executive session.
Open session, please, Scott.
All right, thanks for confirming that, uh, that's the record I wanted to make, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, one more question, since we have several, um, emails, both positive, in a positive light, and those in a negative light, are we to also read those? Um, because we, between the two, it's very difficult for me to understand how to acknowledge that. Do you know what I'm asking? Because we've got some of the public here to speak, yes, but then everybody has the same emails, either positive or negative, and how do we handle those?
So my suggestion is that you take just a moment, um, and show Mr. Reed the emails that you have received. And then they either all come in, or none of them come in. Um, so it's up to Mr. Reed whether he wants you to consider all of those, or he does not want you to consider those.
I'm fine with them, them all going.
Okay, all right, then the board can consider the, uh, the emails, the written correspondence that's received, as well as the public comments today.
Okay, so I'm gonna need, um, a couple minutes, just to make sure that he has a copy of everything. Or I guess if nobody minds, I can work on that while we start this.
We were providing these to everyone?
To Matt.
Good, you want copies?
Sure.
Do you need to review them before any sessions?
I don't imagine so, but...
There are...
Not this is leaving.
Yeah. Probably, I'd say, not more.
I think it's more important that you guys review them.
So I have...
So, here's, um, just just so you know, for the record, if, if you, at this point, they are still confidential communications, because they relate to a personnel matter. If either Mr. Reed or the board decides to refer to them in the public se- session of the meeting, then they would become a public document. So, uh, I don't know whether that affects how you want to use them or not, but, um, uh, that's the rule.
The statement that I made prior to a sleeping executive session about my concerns, uh, uh, about this piece of it, can I speak to that as far as these letters go?
That's, that's entirely up to you at this point, it's a open public meeting now.
Are you talking about what we're saying?
Okay. Um, my concern in the end of our executive session, one of my last statements is that I feel that, um, if you chose to have the public speak at this time, that that is absolutely your choice. However, being that we have been privy to both sides of this, and personally, I'm saying this to you, this is a difficult situation, not only for you, but for us as well, and I'm concerned about the town and the people in the community in it. And for anyone to have to endure the public comments that are in some of this, I really hate for you to have to experience. You have friends here, you have family here, and some of these things entail community members. And I'm concerned for everyone's sake in here, and everyone's sake out there, that if we start airing this laundry, it makes for nastiness and contention and dissension within our community. And so my question to you in this, when, when Scott, I'll ask you for open and private.
Yeah.
I believe there's two pieces to this. If you would like everyone that's here to speak, that I think is, they're here and they want to, and that's fine. But this piece, Matt, I really would like you to consider, not just for our sake, but for the whole community, and especially for yours. This is not pretty, and I just hate to see this, this in public. But, but I'm, this is just my comment, and I'm saying it...
Are you speaking specifically to the negative votes?
I am, I'm speaking to both, I, I think it's, it's ugly. None of us want to be here, we're all feeling that this is ugly. And I'm just trying to protect everyone, I, I don't have a stake in the game here. And, and I'm concerned, so that's all it is. Take it for what it is. So, that said, um, we can start? Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would like to review them first.
Okay, then, let's go ahead and start the, um, public portion.
Yep.
And as we're doing that, I'm, I'm doing that to get that ready for you.
Yep.
Okay, so, at, at this point, do I open this up, like a meet, general meeting, time, date, all of that?
No, no, you don't need to, it's already open as a public meeting, and you've already noted, or I already noted the time, so you can just ask for the first speaker.
Okay, first speaker, and we're limiting comments to three minutes, like, in a typical...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so when you're ready, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there will be, um, a clock on the wall that will give you your three minutes, so whoever wants to come up first, let the proceedings begin.
Well, I have a chance to speak outside of this three minutes then, or should I utilize part of this three minutes also for statements?
I think we're asking questions up and away, like we did with Steve.
So, as it went with manager Kudron in executive session, the board asked questions and he was able to answer. One of the things we have to be very careful in, now that yours is public, is that he said, she said. So we're asking everybody, when you have a comment to make about staff or a particular individual, you refrain from using their name. Staff or board member is fine, but stay away from that, now you can say manager Kudron, you can say ma- um,
Yep.
Public Works Director Matt Reed, but as far as everyone else, just for everyone's protection, it's best that you refrain from any other specific names. What we are wanting to be careful of is kind of the he said, she said, because we didn't get into that with Steve, it was just direct questions, you know, to Steve, we didn't have somebody here or in there to rebuttal his comments, so um, obviously Scott Krab is online, and when we, or every, anybody gets kind of out of line and, and the lines start to get blurred, he will interrupt us and try and bring us back to center, so if you would like to speak first, great.
We're happy to do so, I need you a chance to get your stuff, those letters together. Sorry.
Just for everyone's knowledge, Scott Krab is our manager, our friends.
Hold on, if you get too long there. So Matt Reed, 35, Grand Tower, 4953. Um, thank you guys for the opportunity to speak today. I take a lot of the pride and the work of our Public Works team. Every single day, I believe that the results of it show. Our roads are plowed before the state and county, the pages you throw, site looks great and runs smoothly, and town itself is clean, organized, and well-paired for. When people compliment how great Grand Lake looks, that's a direct reflection of the team's effort. Sometimes not the most flavorful job, but it's absolutely necessary. Even projects that many towns might overlook, like our bridges have been stripped and resold and brought back to life, those kinds of projects, the time and effort it takes, and the pride that everybody puts into that is incredible. I hold myself at a very high standard. And in turn, I hold my team at the same level. Is that always fair? Probably not, that standard might be tough at times, but it means doing, it might mean doing things twice, sure. But it is also why people notice. People notice how good town looks, people notice how hard the crew works, people notice. The weekly running orders provided, I provide aren't about overworking anyone. It's about giving direction, structure, and accountability, and making sure everyone has the, every person knows their role in every task that is tied to a purpose. I'm always available for questions and clarification, I want, I want my staff to succeed, succeed, and I believe that clear expectations help make that happen. At the end of the day, I'm proud of this department, proud of their accomplishments, and proud of the example we set for how small, how a small town can operate with big town professionalism. Grand Lake deserves that standard, and that's what I'll continue to deliver. I also want to address some concerns, I think that'll probably weigh for questions. I understand that stepping beyond the traditional boundaries of the role might look different, but everyone in these efforts has done this transparency, collaboration, and full intent of benefiting our community. My goal has always been to make Grand Lake stronger, not just by maintaining their own structure, but by helping create the kind of town people want to visit. Invest in and call them, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, anyone else like to come up and speak?
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Sandra Beckett, and I live at 16th and 20th West Port Row here in Grand Lake. I have no, um, desire to comment on any he said, she said activity, but I would just like to say that I moved here, um, in January of 2020, and I, I don't, I'm not friends really with Matt, but I know of him. I see his heartburn medication, which shows in the mail. I, um, don't know the details of personnel issues, but the only question I have for the trustees today is it seems like an extreme measure that must, that one would expect warrant, that would warrant this kind of serious action to take care of a personnel matter. And so I'm only wondering is that if there is a problem with personnel, is there, has there been other mitigation strategies considered? Was, um, the action taken against Matt done in a silo? Was a collaboration involved between appropriate parties? And were those considerations taken into effect, you know, before this decision? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just to answer that question, we're really not going to be answering questions, but the, so that everyone is aware, in these proceedings, that's, that's exactly what we're looking at, is the process in which this determination was made by the manager, including, um, training and various things throughout, um, the Colorado government. Uh, help me, what's it?
Mountain State.
Thank you, Mountain State, simply, I'm frazzled, guys, I'm sorry. Um, so yes, that, those things have been done, and that is to what we're looking at, is in that process that the manager took, um, what were the findings and how are we looking at that, so just so everyone's aware, this isn't just a, somebody made a decision, okay, next, I'm ready.
Good afternoon. My name is Arnold Miller, and I live at three oh one Golden Road, forty-eighth, outside of town, apparently. I've had the privilege to work with Grand Lake since twenty eighteen. Made a number of friends, done a lot of events. And I can tell you that one of the things that impressed about the town is how well we've been for love and how organized the town manager has been doing that. Matt Reed is a hardworking man, and he has high standards, because all he wants to do is make Grand Lake better. One of the things that was instrumental in was bringing ski jury in this year. I had the privilege of watching him interact with his employees. I never saw any inappropriate behavior. I never saw anything but respect on both sides, and how he conducted himself and how the employees responded to him. I am extremely upset that he was terminated from that position. I don't know what the processes were to get him to that point, but I hope this board reviews it seriously and looks into it and makes an independent determination as to whether or not that process was fair, ethical, and adequate. And if it wasn't, Matt Reed needs to be reinstated into that position. He is a benefit to this town. He is a hard worker, and I think the talent would be in dire straits if you let this termination him. Thank you for that. Thank you.
I am Brenda Freeman, I'm at six six eight, coming through the four oh five in Ramby. Co-owner of Sage Rush here in Grand Lake, lived here since two thousand, and I've never seen the town look as good as it does now. And with all of the events that Sage Rush participates in, which is all of them, no, or not, the votes will be missing. Matt's always there, and it's always been done well. So I, you know, I don't know the ins and outs. I don't know if he said or she said, and Christina, I don't know if this is fair. Um, or if this is what you meant, but was there, uh, you know, communication and transparency and professionalism with, you know, what things were not being done correctly, because it documented, or was this just out of the loop? So that, I think, needs to be shared with public. Um, you know, what the transparency and how that actually worked, just that we all have a sense of the town is taking care of us by keeping people who do a good job. Or if there's, let's, you know, understand why. I don't understand why. We only see positive things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Coolen, dear surfer, out of the twelve oh four West Portal Road, if you're in the town of Grand Lake. Um, I don't know Matt personally really, but I've met him a few times. At different events, um, so form of a just kind of character. I'm not gonna repeat everything that the folks have said about, you know, I agree with it. He's very responsive. He's brought a lot to this town. Um, the one thing that hasn't been mentioned that this guy did, uh, a little history, is that he showed some fire. That was incredible. He was one of the heroes there while his own house was being burned. The guy really stepped up, so it speaks a lot to his character. It's disappointing, you know, that we had some, some disagreements here. This government, we could all agree, there's been a lot of disagreement across our government these days. But we're adults and we're professionals, and I think you work it out versus throwing baby off of the map water, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Freeman, from six six eight, kind of going by, from Colorado, I'm a Sage Rush also, so I've had that since ninety-nine. And I've seen, you know, the town grow up and how everything, how Matt has improved the town and improved the way the plowing gets done in the morning, the events especially is the biggest thing I have noticed, and I know now it's taking a bigger, or, you know, kind of taking up our events doing instead of the chamber, that's been fairly good. So I think it's really important to have somebody in that position that has the town first and has so much, uh, he has wherewithal, he has the, he does, he does such a great job, and it's been up for years. And I really appreciate it and like to keep him around.
Thanks. I hate speaking.
Oh, my name's Atella Carney, one twenty, kind of road forty-nine fifty-three. I've owned property up here since nineteen ninety-two. Built a house in Columbia in ninety-five. I've been up here a long time. Um, stole my house in Columbia, built a house that I got burnt down and rebuilt. I am one of Matt's neighbors, but I've probably known Matt for fifteen years. And anytime anybody, not only anybody, anybody asks him for a favor, or to help out, or to bitch at him, he's always there, never even hesitates about it. I can't, here again, I don't know the ins and outs, but I can't even imagine him even being in this position right now. And, uh, I don't know anybody else. I, I know a lot of people in this town, um, like I said, I've been out here for a while, and I'm full-time up here now, and, it's just, uh, kind of a hard thing to imagine that it has come to this or, or a small conflict, in my opinion, in the private sector, this would never ever happen. Manager would step in place and say, what's the problem, resolve the problem. So it would never, ever come to this issue here. I've never seen a man so committed to being a part of the town and growing the town and expanding the public activities and cleaning all the sites and snow pump. I watch him mute it two in the morning, let the snow out. The plow, so I watch him every morning, get up at five thirty, get in his truck, and take off for work. He's reliable. He's dependable. He's honest. And the town would be, it would be an embarrassment to see him lose his job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, oh, thank you.
I'm Cody Gardner, at eleven point first street in Grand Lake. I'm one of the Public Works team members on the mechanic third down. I've been here since the middle of May. Um, my position is a new one, so it's something that we've, I have been working to figure out what the actual ins and outs are. Through that process, I have absolutely nothing to complain about as far as working with Matt and what we've been doing to figure out what I am in charge of, what my responsibilities are. Um, I also am in the shop a majority of the time, so I don't get to work with the team very often. I do a little bit. From what I've seen, I haven't witnessed any sort of disrespect from Matt towards the guys that work for him. Um, this little situation popped me off guard a bit, because I was completely unaware of any threat to the team to this extent. In general, people working together, nobody's ever been completely getting along with everyone. They've got their little perks and whatnot. But I completely didn't know anything about this until this last week. Um, so I guess it kind of reiterates, I'm a little bit confused how something got to this little thing so quickly, or I guess unknown from my perspective. In the time that I've been here, I have nothing but good to say about working for Matt and being a part of this team.
So, okay, if you speak here, are these standard ready yet?
If so, I'm Jack Crawford, three oh five West Starnet, uh, Logan Grass, standing in bravery. Um, we kind of speak on behalf of the majority of the group, because most of them couldn't be here. Um, we hear the things that are being said. No one can deny that Matt has done good things to the town. Um, but unfortunately, through this process, we have seen a lot of things that are not desirable in the workplace. We have been mistreated, and the whole crew feels that. There is a lot of stress. There's a lot of, frankly, depression because of, you know, we work more than we live, really. I mean, that's how it goes, and no one wanted it to come to this point, but it has, and we all want to work here. We enjoy working here, but if management can't get better, we can't stay here, and manager Kudron has been helping us through this for probably four to six months, so he has tried and worked with us and looked for solutions and tried to better understand situations, and week after week, we show up, and there's no changes. We have gotten to the point where we're speaking up for ourselves and trying to come to the solution. And the fact is, this last week has been great, and I hate saying that, but it's true, and we're getting stuff done, and we're not getting arced on and disrespected, and we're sick of it, and we don't know how much longer we can go, and we also see with past employees the same result, same everything, so. Thanks for letting us speak, and I think we both would like to step out at this point, let this meeting finish on its own, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Jackson.
Next.
Reed thirty-five, I'm carrying the number forty-nine fifty-three, I'm Matt Reed's wife. I've had a front row seat to this. Um, and in his position, since he has started, he has had the utmost respect for his guys. I hear him on the phone. I've never heard him yell at them. I've never heard them be berated. Um, and in fact, at the beginning of this month, he was telling me he was so relieved to have a team that he really felt like he could lead. They were doing a phenomenal job. And I think that management could have asked these younger men or his employees to bring any concerns directly to Matt, which is mediation, instead of, and I don't know if that happened or not, but, um, it seemed like that would have been a good stepping stone, instead of, you know, jumping from, um, going over Matt's head to the town manager, and the handbook is pretty clear that you go directly to your employer or to your boss if you have any concerns, and I think he's totally blindsided by any of their concerns. Um, hearing them say they're tired of working, I think they're paid, they're paid overtime, and you go to work to work. So please remember that. If they don't like to work as hard, then maybe this isn't the role for them. But he has never yelled at them or been rude. When I heard him answer his phone at all hours of the day, he will jump in his truck and go help them as fast as he possibly can while he is still answering a million other phone calls from all over town. Um, I personally get sort of annoyed by how many phone calls he gets because it does, it does affect our feeling, because he is the one that everybody is calling. So it blows my mind that these can't, these guys can't go to him when a lot of other people in this town, it made it pretty clear, everything about him. So, um, I just hope that these young men can be led to understand how to read a handbook, how you act in a professional setting, and that would be huge for them all in their future. Thank you.
Elena Carroll, by, by M one Summit Trail, here as a town clerk. Since being appointed as, uh, co-town manager since June twenty twenty-four, I have witnessed an ongoing pattern of unprofessional, aggressive, and inappropriate behavior by Public Works Director Matthew Reed. His actions have repeatedly disrupted internal operations, undermined staff, and created a toxic and uncomfortable work environment. I've had numerous incidents. Everything that has been said here about Matt, today, I completely agree with. Great work ethic, ethic, the whole thing. But they don't see what goes on behind the scenes. They don't. I have, maybe you guys all have been submitted six pages of complaints that I have received from employees from every department. It is beyond frustrating as HR. I can handle the job. I have never, ever had an issue escalate to this point. And it is unfathomable that it has got to this point, in my opinion. Manager Kudron has followed everything professionally the way he should have. He's listened to his employees, and we've finally been heard. That is why this is being brought for you. In my opinion, none of this should be a shock to Matthew, because this has been going on for a long time now. At least since May. I myself have filed two complaints personally against him. One for him being beyond aggressive, screaming in my office. I have it on video. You guys are more than welcome to see it. Ask, I will submit it. There was also, it isn't there when it happened, and there was another witness in the office who would have heard it. The last incident that really set me off, and I can no longer have any communication with him, because I have lost all respect for him, both personally and professionally, is being confronted at the Town of Grand Lake Community Picnic that I helped put together. If there's nothing like being approached by several members of this community, asking if I'm being paid for sexual transactions, and that they're all being told by him throughout the event. Feels great. Feels, makes me feel really valued around here. So I was the manager Kudron immediately the next morning and expressed my frustrations, and I set my boundaries, and that's what I have done since. And I will not change that. The boys said, it is hard for them to work for him. Has nothing to do with working. It's the environment that they're working in and who they're working for. Those boys are hard workers, and everyone sitting here knows that. I urge you to really think this through, because you probably aren't gonna have that much of a staff left if, if this goes through, because I will be the first one looking for employment elsewhere, and as soon as the appropriate timing comes, I will be submitting my resignation. Thank you.
Anyone else at this time?
Can you speak twice?
Typically, no. So we're gonna stick to the rule. I'm sorry. But I'm really trying to stick to all the rules for today, um. And so, does anybody else at this time want to speak? Okay, Matt, would you mind coming here?
Yep.
And look at this list. You may already have knowledge of these. If I don't have to print those out, that would be amazing. If you want me to, I can. Those are positive. Those are positive. I, no, those are the negative ones, and I can print those for you right now. You can take a look at those. And you also still have the option that we don't go through.
No, I want them all.
Okay, so let, give me, give me one minute, and then I will back to Matt if it's okay. For now, I'm gonna give you my copies.
Okay.
And then give these back.
Yep.
And I will reprint them for you, but it'll just save us. I think it'll save us all time. And I don't have them stapled, so it might be easier to keep them to that. And then if there's any on here, I can, do you want the, let me screenshot.
Yep.
These are all that we have.
Instructions, that's my least things, but that's okay.
You've seen this. You've seen this.
Yeah, but I didn't really need to read them all, so.
So, okay, that's fine. Here's the total list. Here's the total list.
Yeah, this will have.
You have the bottom five. Oh, and I think some of those, you are, whatever you want me to print, I will print.
But I guess I would, but.
Well, I will. I mean, but if you want to see specifically now, I just, the, the concern that we're having is you know, the length of all of these.
Yep.
And this is where I think it's, it's your decision. I don't want to say.
These are all fine and go now.
Brilliant. Okay. So, um, Scott, on this part now, the comments in the public are finished. And I have all of the emails or text messages. I have all the transcripts. And Matt has seen them and he knows who they're from. At this point, what would you advise? Going through every single one of these or now that Matt has seen both, is it up to him now to go into executive session? What would, what would you like the boards to start asking him questions?
Well, the board has, uh, received all of those, I, as I understand it. So you don't need to read all of those into the record. They can just be incorporated. As far as the next step, if Mr. Reed would like to go into executive session to discuss those with the board, uh, he can ask to do that. Uh, if he wants to address them in the open meeting, he can do that. And then if he does not wish to address them any further, then the board would, um, return to executive session.
So Matt, your choice now is to continue the back and forth with the board in the executive or stay in public?
Um, can I have a copy of those for the, the back and forth or whatever you want to do? I mean, I don't want to take everybody's time, but I'm happy to keep it in public.
Well, okay, but, but it's your choice. Now the question begins.
Yeah.
Not just this, but other things. And so.
I guess we, I mean.
Is this, are we still asking if this is public or private?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's got public about ten tries. So I would like to continue with his wishes because it does, it does sort of.
Julie, I'm not questioning his wishes. I'm just making sure that he understands because it has been, he's conceived. Sorry, you.
But the decision is up to him and he seems confident in his decision, so I'm.
Waiting to hear that. Thank you. Rest in peace. So thank you very much. I'm waiting to hear his notes.
I have to now speak about.
Well, there's a question that we have. I don't feel, obviously, we're asking us all to say, we're still going to use due to our research in the regard of this or any.
No, that's.
Yeah, I think that is.
Yeah, we'll go back to that and she has more to teach.
No, it's actually. Okay, if I can, I haven't worked here.
We're being here too.
I'll build this rest. Are you saying questions in public? So you know, we'll. Without any.
That may not be.
That's what it is.
When she's not moving.
It sounds like it would be better for the public if it was in executive session.
Okay, that's your decision.
Didn't you say?
Okay, so if we're going to go into executive session now, then is this where I ask the public to leave and then we go back into executive like we did with manager Kudron, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I thank everyone for coming. The one of the last thing, what I'd like to speak to is that in any business, private or public, there is so much that goes on behind the scenes. And this has been an issue that manager Kudron has taken very seriously over a long period of time. And that this was not done flippantly and Matt's character has never been impressed him. And I think that it's important that that is understood. And it's very difficult at this time because there are a lot of things that we're just not privy to as a board because that's not our role and that's some of what we're trying to find out today. But this is the way the world works, whether it's private or whether it's public. And so I just want you all to know that we are trying to do our due diligence on this issue. So thank you for coming.
Good luck, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're back, um, in open session and we will be adjourning for the day and re-adjourning, convening, thank you, October twenty first, which is a Tuesday at ten thirty A M.
So you need to.
Say that again, you, you will garble.
You need, you need a motion to set it for October twenty to ten thirty.
Make a motion for the attendance of this executive session meeting to occur on Tuesday, October twenty first at ten thirty.
Again.
Please say it.
Right.
Trusty Sean.
Hi.
First event, uh, Starksen.
Hi.
Trusty Cassel.
Hi.
Um, Eric O'Ton, Savon. And Mary West.
Hi, motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Crowe, going with Joyce Beach, politics, to your family and friends and, uh,
Oh, you, you guys put in a good hard day, so no worries.
Thank you. Katie Adrick.
No, I'm a saver. I.
Hi.
Hi.
We. Um, we need, have, we need like folders.
Folders, exactly.
You got six or seven, like little. We put folders.
Yeah, put our name on it.
Thank you guys.
Oh, it's me.
Well, just so it stays here and.
Oh, I thought.
It was.
Well, okay, this meeting is not over yet.
You know.
Um, this. I mean, obviously.
We bought it. You might have been saying this meditation. I have just one idea.
I don't know. It may have come from staff.
I.
I know.
We bet this, we generally, we go to accidents, you know.
Yeah, I know. No, I was just trying to hear a little.
You know, felt anywhere. He's like, I've been looking all this time and.
And then that's.
Yeah, it's everything. So it was a plan to. I don't know, like this thing. Will be playing this.
Well, I just saw the idea. I have them.
I see this. Yeah, but there was. Then I found it. They told me that.
It's like, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, it's from. I know. Yeah, I'm trying to.
Hopefully, once it's done.
Do the right thing, right?
You do, yep.
That's our goal.
We can, we can walk away if no words.
This.
No. Breaking.
No, there are bragging rights still on your days. And I think for two of these, I'd have wondered in that, so.
Um, being as though we've gone feeding at one, ten thirty and that's what we're speaking again. Like that.
Uh, what's two grand teams, uh, decent baseballs for the season with. So it's calm now.
Do, uh, well, for good. Who ate this? I'm well, I agree with the opposite of you guys, but I hate this.
I'm just here to say facts.
When you walk up, it's gonna sweep. We're a little crap.